Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Springfield Local Board of Education to order. This is Tuesday, August 20, 2024. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong.
Present.
Mrs. Ferola.
Present.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Okay. Would you please stand in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is board members' informal. Mr. Parker, would you like to start?
Sure. I don't really have anything to do too much, but as we're getting back into the school year, I just want to say, let's just keep a joyful attitude. You know, sometimes there's bad things that happen, but you know, we gotta remember why we all do this. And I think it's important to just be joyful for everything we have. And I just get nostalgic thinking about the football games coming up. And I'm, not everybody had a great high school, but let's make the best of what we can. And I think that's really exciting for all of us, whether board or staff. It doesn't matter. I think we also just be joyful.
That's funny you should say, because our speaker for convocation talked about
You sure did.
making your own joy.
Yes.
So that, I mean, that was almost like, that was, that fit right perfectly into it. But we have to make our own joy. That was awesome.
I gotta be called. No, I'm excited for back to school. I have a senior this year and an eighth grader, so super excited. Congratulations to Shayna on your Friends of Education Award. Amazing. Spartan snack pack representative here. Thanks for coming out. Great program, great donation stuff at Walmart this year. The backpack program, I think it was 600 backpacks this year. That was pretty amazing. But teachers, staff, students, parents, welcome back. I heard Safety Town was another success.
Yes, it was.
Hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder again.
Okay. No, it's all yours.
But the band Car Wash, I had fun there. On Saturday, I was just telling Parker a funny story about that. But no, I'm super excited and I think my kids are excited and I think we got a lot of momentum.
I've got a few things. Updates from Columbus. The legislative year kind of came to an end June 26th. And DeWine has taken action on House Bill Two, the $600 million of the funding. That was passed. Other bills waiting for DeWine's approval are House Bill 47, House Bill 147, House Bill 214, House Bill 29, Senate Bill 94, Senate Bill 98, and Senate Bill 112, which would require school buildings to comply with safety standards. So I've got to go back and read that one. That one, I'm not sure where they're coming from on that one. An important education bill waiting for DeWine's action is also Senate Bill 168 on education deregulation. This bill was an extensive list of changes, including teacher licensure, teacher evaluations, exemptions from certain regulatory requirements, and high-performing school districts. From OSBA, the platform that we always, when we send a delegate down, they vote on things that come before the delegate assembly. There's two this year that I think that are worth mentioning. One was submitted by Woodmore Local District in Sandusky. It's Resolution 2024-7. It would allow districts to charge for labor costs strictly associated with its receiving and fulfilling public records request. Across the state, a lot of schools are seeing an enormous intrusion, I guess is a word, of miscellaneous public records requests, just to see what's out there. And that's fine. We have records, you know, and you have a right to see that. I don't, we don't have a problem with that. What we're seeing, though, is we only had to pay for paper or copies. But now with the amount that we're seeing, this resolution would also include in our platform, OSBA platform, the cost with Chris's department or administration's department, labor costs that would be associated with that. I think that's worthwhile to look at. The other resolution is 2024-8 from Clark, Sonny, Clark Local and Allen. Tax abatements, tax abatements siphon critical funding away from public school districts, leaving local taxpayers to make up the difference. In short, it would require school tax levy monies, which have been voted upon, to be used for funding schools, be exempt from tax increments. The TIF allowed under ORC 5709. I know that's a lot of language that a lot of people don't understand. But sometimes when abatements come in, school levies, school systems suffer from that. Other than that, ditto Shayna, yours. Thank you, Heather, for being here. I went out and saw something different that most people don't. I was watching a varsity golf game today. And you should be in touch with Mr. Hannah, because if that's the case, you have a special announcement to make. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll try to kind of go off of Parker. I'm not one that reflects on things. I just kind of move forward and try to forget about stuff. But last year, I felt like, not a lot of negativity, but a lot of negativity. I don't know. I hope that this year, we can kind of look more at the positive that's going on in our community and our district, looking at like our social media and all the hires. That's huge. I mean, we're bringing back a lot of classes to see. Donnie has two that are up in the big building. I now have two that are up in the big building. And the, they don't have as many study halls. They're not sitting in study halls like they were. And then you go down to the younger buildings and they have more art and more music and everything like that. And I think that's huge. We made promises to bring that back. And a lot of people will come at you and go, well, you made this, you made that. Well, let's try to think about what we have done. We can't do it all. It's impossible. I don't know who I'm all talking to. It is impossible to bring it all back within one minute. The pay-to-play, we were told that maybe we didn't get that out there as well as we should have. Well, I hope it's out there now. $150 an athlete per sport, $600 cap. That's huge.
Per family, per family.
Family, per family, I'm sorry. Go to other districts, and we've got a neighboring district that's $500 per sport, per pupil. I don't know how you do that. So I hope that we can go and start looking at the positive. We do have football coming up. Our golf teams are doing well. I just had an accidental walk into the gym for a meeting and the JV volleyball team came back and beat Ellet tonight in their first set. I'm not sure, not kind of what, hopefully they keep going. Girls volleyball opened up to a win last night. So there's a lot of things going on right now. And then, of course, my daughter's like, well, be more positive. And the first thing yesterday, I'm like, it's so cold. This is the dumbest thing. And she's like, well, it's not raining. True, it wasn't raining. And I mean, I guess I gotta eat my own words, right?
And you just had a birthday.
I did just have a birthday.
Happy birthday.
So did she. Thank you, so did she. So it's an exciting time, but I'm excited to be back. Well, I don't go back to school, but I'm excited to send the kids back to school. I know that they're gonna have a great year, so see what all we can keep bringing back.
Two soccer games tonight, too.
Yep.
Yep, they're going on right now. And congratulations. I've gotten Shayna on different levels. Our kids were in the same preschool. They're, you know, life kind of throws different changes at you. But probably one of the most, talk about positivity. She's always got a smile on her face. Walk down the hall and I know Dani's come to her when she's been upset. So it's great to know that there's really good people when you can't be around for your kid that are there for you. So thank you, and you very well deserve.
That's a very good way to express it.
Thank you.
It's great to have.
Did I steal your thunder?
No, absolutely not. Because, you know, I, I'm gonna say the same thing that others have expressed. I'm, am I allowed to say tickle to death?
If you want to be tickled to death, you can be tickled to death.
But I am. I'm just so, you know, having, having been here when we had, were able to offer more programs and so forth. And to see that coming back, I understand what a difference that's going to make in a student's life and in that student's school day and in the teachers' too. Because the more classes the students are in, in my opinion, the more classes they're in, the less time they have to get bored and frustrated with nothing to do. So I think that's really good. And I want to recognize the administration for careful planning and for looking at how to bring in as many programs as we can and for the principals that I know had to redo and redo, particularly at the 712 building. Redo and redo what the students have on their, on their schedule. So thank you to all the efforts that have gone out to make this what I have no doubt will be a good year. And I am tickled to death.
So gotta find our own joy.
Well, it's, but thank you. All right, number five. It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16, 2024. And that, those are attachments, Exhibit One.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion pass. Next, citizens' comment on agenda items are welcome at this time. Are there any comments, any citizens' comments? Anyone want to address?
It's all you, Fin.
Seeing none. Then let's go to number six or seven, excuse me, payments of bills. These are monthly bills, or monthly payments. It's recommended that the board approve payments of bills for the month of July, Plending Audit.
Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion pass. Number eight is payments of bills, then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payment of bills per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41. And that, those are in Exhibit Three.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Adams, it's been moved in second.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes. Motion pass. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for July 2024. And those are contained in Exhibits Four, Five, and Six.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
It's been moved in second. Excuse me, it has been, motion passed. All right, the next items are personnel items. 10.1, a reduction in force. Approve a reduction of a building secretary position at Springfield High School and Junior High in accordance with the restructuring of the office support staff. 10.2, accept the resignation of classified employee Melissa Kitchen effective August 26, 2024. 10.3, accept the resignation of classified employee Melina. I'm, I'm sorry. Melina? Give me the right pronunciation.
N.
Okay. I apologize to her for not learning the, to say it correctly. Effective August 21, 2024. 10.4, approve an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee Patricia Mayo to begin once sick leave is exhausted and continue through November 15, 2024. 10.5, approve, approve an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee Julie Davis to begin once sick leave is exhausted through the end of the '24-'25 school year. 10.6, approve an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee Laura Pace for the '24-'25 school year. 10.7, employ Denise Taylor as an eight-hour custodian at Springfield High School and Junior High per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective August 22, 2024. 10.8, reassign Patricia Alejandro as a four-hour custodian at the Springfield High School and Junior High Field House per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective August 5, 2024. And this will be in addition to her current position. Employment of, 10.9, employ Eva Hutchins as a 100% teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective the '24-'25 school year. 10.10, employment. Employ the following substant, classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screenings effective first day assigned. And the names are listed on the agenda. 10.11, employ the following per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screenings effective first day assigned. And these are bus drivers and bus monitors, and they are listed. The names and hours are listed on the agenda. 10.12, reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective for the '20, '24, '25 school year. And these are teaching assistants and bus and van driver and a monitor. And they are listed on the agenda. 10.13, adjustment of hours. It is recommended that the board approve adjusting the shift hours for the following positions at Spring Hill Elementary due to staffing needs effective the '24-'25 school year. Educational aides, Davis, Clark, and Simmons from three hour to 2.25 hours. And then employee, cafeteria employees McIntyre, Wheatley, and Mitchell from 2.5 to 2.0 hours. 10.14, athletic, approve an athletic supplemental contract for Brandon Barnes as the eighth grade football assistant coach at 4% for the '24-'25 school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper. I'm sorry. I thought, I, supplemental per the '24-'25 school year per the negotiated agreement. 10.15, approve Carrie Franks for the '23-'24 school building leadership team per the negotiated agreement. Okay, that's all personnel.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed and personnel are approved. Number 11. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution regarding complimentary passes and waiving payment of any entry fee to events for the '25, '24, '25 school year. And the resolution is attached for the agenda. It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion pass. Number 12, student handbooks. It is recommended that the board approve the student handbooks for Springfield High School and Junior High, Shrop Intermediate, and Spring Hill Elementary for the '24-'25 school year. And each of the handbooks was provided in the attachments to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Well, thank you for the hard work that went into that. I know there's names that come off, names that have to go on for the updates. Thank you very much.
Principals do a nice job. Principals, assistants, and the secretaries, yes, they do.
Thank you.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion pass. Number 13, these are approving bus routes. It is recommended that the board approve the bus routes for the '24-'25 school year and authorize the superintendent or designee to make changes as necessary during the '24-'25 school year to address enrollment changes and safety issues. And there are, the bus routes were attached for, to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Yep. Those buses will start running.
Yes, they will be. It's exciting.
Number, it is recommended, number 14. It's recommended that the board approve a resolution declaring transportation to other schools impractical in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Sections 3327.01 and 3327.02. And therefore, will offer payment in lieu of providing transportation.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion pass. Number 15. It's necessary to appoint a delegate and an alternate to the OSBA Annual Business Meeting in November 2024. After speaking with, Mr. David Hofer has volunteered to be the representative to the business meeting. And the alternate, Mr. Furlong, has agreed to do that if necessary.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed and thank you, Dave and Donnie.
Thank you.
Number 16. It's recommended that the board approve a five-year forecast update.
So moved.
Second.
Does he want to say anything? Mr. Adams, do you want to?
Yes, I'm gonna pull it up and talk about it.
Do you want to, before we vote, or you want to do it? You want us to vote on it? Well, why don't, why don't you go ahead and explain it, then we'll.
Yeah, I think that's better. It probably appears that we're doing forecasts all the time. And we are, because when you update your financial recovery plan, which we just did last month, the state requires you to submit another five-year forecast to match that financial recovery plan. So what I have in here is the 2024 numbers are the actual numbers, the year-end numbers, which we came in quite well. Some of the major things that have occurred in our forecast is, look at line 1.01. That's a biggie. That where our revaluation happened. As you'll see, in 2023, we were at 12.4 million. We received one-half of the evaluation in '24. And then you see the full impact in '25. The reason it goes back down in '26, '27, and '28 is because our renewals haven't been passed yet. Okay? Unfortunately, line 1.035 is the money we get from the state. Thanks, Dustin, for doing this. I have the pointer probably in my office. It's flat, as you can tell, from '23 to '24. '25 simulations show a little bump. I also anticipate a bump in students, so I put a little in that. State share of property taxes, it just goes along with the increase of the general property taxes. And all other revenue, you see the, quite a bump in.
Actual school lunch and breakfast program. So that was announced via email to parents and social media there. So extremely happy and excited about that this year. Some, some questions that have came up this afternoon since we announced that were if you've already received a direct certification letter or letter stating that you were free and reduced, you do not have to submit another application. But one of the major pieces of running the program this way is that we do need to work to getting an application from every household. Even if you think, I don't qualify, that's okay. We want, you know, to submit that application because, A, you may be surprised, the numbers change every year as to what indicates qualification there. So, and our reimbursements are going to be determined by the applications that we have returned and where, where students would be placed on the previous scale. So we still will be doing point-of-sale. Students will still sign in and be marked what students are eating. That'll be how they determine reimbursement. But that's been a question that we've gotten back today. So wanted to help clarify that. The second, one, second item or another item of area responsibility is transportation. Thank you for approving the board, the bus routes this afternoon. They will be changing. That's something that we can never set in stone. Every, every time a student moves in or changes their mode of transportation, that could change entire bus routes. So look in your emails. Melinda, our transportation supervisor, has been doing a lot of work getting those bus routes out. Has sent out some updates of new, new times there. They may just adjust a few minutes in most cases, but she tries to keep parents updated with the latest information there. You'll see, we hired several new drivers on the agenda tonight. So we're, we're glad to have them on board. That'll help us provide more consistent transportation this year. Whereas last year, you know, unfortunately, we had to send out many notices of times are gonna be adjusted today, or you're gonna be writing this. And in some cases, canceling bus routes. We're hoping we're moving toward a point with staffing where those will be less common. I do not want to say going away, but not, but those situations should be less common. Like to thank all the custodians and maintenance staff for, I know I've said it already this summer, but thank them for all their hard work. The buildings are looking great and looking forward to seeing students in there tomorrow.
And that's another part that you're.
Yeah, it's another area that I oversee there. And I know Shelley's going to talk about the calendars a little bit later. But working with marketing and social media, we work with them often to get good news passed out to the schools. And hopefully that we're doing that better and better as we, as we move on to.
Could I ask a question on the, going back to the.
Could I ask a question on the, going back to the free and reduced lunch applications? If, it used to be if they qualified for a certain level free and reduced, then their fees could be maybe waived. Does, how does this program impact that?
Well, because we're, we still are requiring applications, students, they will, their application, if they're determined to be free, will waive their fees as, as it always have there, and that's one of the reasons why we need to ensure that everybody submits applications, because it will not-
So it's not automatic?
Yeah. If they're still determined to be paid, paid students, even though they're not going to be charged for lunches, they will still incur their class fees and consumable fees and items like that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Will we be sending the applications home with everybody to make it easier for them? Or is there a way for them?
There's a way for them to fill it out online at lunchapplication.com. We encourage it. Makes it easier for parents and for us processing them, but there's also contact information on there if they need a paper form, we'll get that to them. And we'll be spending time this year making sure, following up with people, you know, if we haven't gotten that phone call home, that, you know, we need to get an application or sending a paper copy home to follow up there. Maybe that's the best way for them to fill it out.
Can that be a requirement on final forms? Potentially?
We'll, we'll have to talk about that because a lot of people have already completed their final forms and determine, you know, things that they can do. I don't want to reset things at this, you know, late in the game.
But, and if, and if we don't qualify for the other type of free lunch, we have to do this again next year, we will put that on final forms. But, like I said, we were very lucky, and apparently there was a Springfield grad in Columbus that, that's how we found out about the program. So, and that was on-
He helped walk us through and-
Helped walk us through and, and, and really helped us out, so, you know, it's always good to have a Springfield grad somewhere.
They lurk.
I'm going to talk about what goes on in the, in the Office of Academics and Human Resource. Please stop me if you have questions in the middle of it. I'm gonna put out a whole bunch of stuff because I, there are a lot of times I say my office takes care of what I call line 26 of my job description, which is other duties as assigned. That means, you know, just if it comes up and someone needs to handle it, it's, it's the four of us who really are handling it, so we work together. But my number one task that I do for the district is I work in what's called the CCIP. And the CCIP is all our federal and state grants. I write all those grants. I am in charge of monitoring those grants, and I am in charge, in charge of doing all the compliance aspects of those grants. Those bring in over 1.37 million dollars a year. So that means those grants account for 10 and a half teachers' salaries, and then seven of the sets of benefits for those teachers amongst other things. It's not strictly their salaries, but without these grants and someone to do this specific part of the job, these, we, we could be without this money, because if you don't do specific things by specific timelines, they're more than willing to take away your money really quick, because it goes back to someone else's pockets. This also fits in with our grants that come through for special education. It comes through for early childhood education grants. When we had ESER, all the ESER grants did also flow through my office in the same aspects. So that's just really the huge money aspect of what goes on inside my office. And it also is any of the materials that are purchased for the district. For those people who attend, their children attend Spring Hill, some of those grants paid for that, the school supplies that were provided for Spring Hill for this school year, we were lucky to have put almost $15,000 worth of money towards school supplies, so that way it didn't have to come out of the pockets of the families, so that's their, that's the beginning of it. I am also responsible for the licensure of every coach to some extent, and every teacher in the district. I'm the person who signs off on each one, so let's use Miranda for an example, because she is a perfect example. If Miranda wants to coach, she has to have what's called a PAP or a pupil activity permit. She applies through, through Ohio's State Board of Education, and what will happen is they'll send me an email, and then what I have to do is I go into final forms, make sure all of her things are up to date in final forms. If they're not, I have to contact the athletic director, who then contacts her, and we go through the whole process. But once everything is done, I approve it, and then the permit then goes through the ODE process, process of approval, where they check against fingerprints, and then it is issued if it is appropriate. Same thing for teachers. When teachers apply, go through the same type of process, but teachers are required to have every five years, 180 seat hours of professional development in order to renew their license. So I end up being the LPDC chair, the Local Professional Development Committee Chair, and I lead that group in meetings in order to count and approve the process that teachers go through in order to renew their license. They have to write a plan for five years at the beginning. It's called an IPDIP, a whole bunch of acronyms, I know. So they write their IPDIP, they turn in their professional development, the team gets to decide whether it aligns with their IPDIP or not, and it's either approved or not based off of that. So every teacher, every five years, goes through that whole process.
And just so, and that, and that was started, you know, about 25 years ago, and it was so teachers, when they do take the professional development, it is something that's going to benefit them. So it's not like they're taking kayaking 101. It's, okay, there's nothing wrong with kayaking 101. Okay, but-
We get the idea.
Yeah, you know, you get the idea, you know? I mean, you know, we, we've had teachers that say, okay, I teach, I teach foreign, I teach French, so I'm gonna go-
We have not had this in this district.
Not this district. So I'm gonna sit on the, on the, yeah, not in this district. We're gonna sit on the sidewalks of France, and I want credit for that. Or, or we had somebody who was, not in this district, a theater teacher, and they wanted to do stand-up comedy, and they wanted that as contact there. So, so the LPDC committee looks at that and says, uh, no.
Not this district. I want to really stress that.
Not this district, no, not this district, no.
Some of the other things that come through my office are all the district testing, all that I do, all the uploads of every student into the district, port, into the district portal, the state portal, for every student to take all of the OSTs, the Ohio State tests, and of course exams, and for ACT, and for OLPA, which is the English Language Learner Proficiency Assessment. All those, anything that's a test that you take on computer, including the iReady that we give multiple times a year in the district, really flows through my office in some way, shape, or form. And by this point, you're probably really, really bored about what comes through my office, but I have a list of about seven pages worth of stuff that I do, and I know nobody wants to hear it, so I'm going to like really kind of tighten it up a lot. I do, I, my office is responsible. I, I say I do because my office is really me, so please know that I'm not taking responsibility for it, it's just really what it is. I, I am responsible for all the teachers and their evaluations. I make sure all the evaluations are on time. I set up the, the process of evaluations, make sure everyone is in there, make sure all the administrators have the proper credentials for it. I do roster verification uploads in order to link students to teachers for our value-added, and that doesn't even start to talk about human resource, but we'll save that for another night, because I'm sure Christine won't talk a little bit.
But in all fairness, human resource, I mean, we did hire nine new teachers this year.
Most of them went through at least two, if not three.
You know, one of the, one of the, one of the processes that, you know, that we've changed this year, or since I've been here, is that the, that the interview process isn't just one and done. It goes through, it goes through multiple, because we want to definitely know that we get the best possible. And I'm gonna tell you, we have gotten amazing teachers, and it seems like all, everybody was doing all summer long was just interviewing and-
Which is a good problem to have.
It's a real great problem to have.
Right, but it does take time.
And it does take time, but it's, it's, so, so human resources is, you know, something that we are definitely up to.
In the grand scheme of things, if anyone ever has a question about what my job is, it's so hard to explain it because it's so many different things, and it is not the same in any single district. Every district's Office of Academics or Curriculum Director is, we all have our little nuances that we're responsible for. And if there are ever any questions about who does it, ask me, I'll say if I do it. If I don't do it, I'll tell you who does it, but there's quite a few things that fall through our offices up here.
Christina, sorry. So, you talked a lot, Mary.
Sorry.
So my title is Director of Student Services, so that sort of encompasses everything that I do, like everything that touches the students, from me helping give professional development and update laws and different information to our special education students, or teachers, I should say, so that they can deliver the appropriate specially-designed instruction. Other students in our districts that might, or in our district that might have a disability fall under the 504 Rehabilitation Act, so we can then offer accommodations in the classroom. I oversee all the 504s across the district, just making sure that those stay compliant and up to date. I oversee our three psych, school psychologists that we contract from the ESC with. They help identify students with disabilities, perform all their testing, and help with managing behavior plans and be a resource within their each building. I also, my fa, I think one of my favorite parts of my job is the overseeing of our preschool program. I was not a certified preschool teacher, but I've grown to love the fact that I can watch those little kids start their school career here with us and get to see them move through the district, especially now that I've been here a couple of years, just seeing where they're going and the progress they've made. And our preschool teachers, it, I mean, it's like magic, how they manage a class full of kids. So I also help facilitate our English Language Learning Program. So we have one employee that helps service those students, so she and I collectively work together to talk about things that she might need to better service those kids, and then what, how to group those children in our classrooms and how to meet their needs, because that is a growing population in Springfield. So it's definitely something that our teachers have not had those experiences yet, and it's coming a little bit faster than I think most of us expected us to, so making sure that they have, the general education teachers have the neat, like the resources and have access to Ms. Boyd, our EL teacher. I also act as a liaison between our buildings and any of our, like, counseling programs. So since I've been, when I arrived here, we had two counseling agencies that we primarily worked with. We have since added a third that has also started to work with some of our students and work, I work with Red Oak to help up, like, they provide a lot of extra services for our district through grant money that they get through the Adams Board or other state agencies. So usually I work with their directors to then help figure out what programs would apply to our Springfield students and what might be a need. I feel like I had one more thing I was about to talk about.
Homeless?
Oh, yeah, homeless. So I also am the homeless director, so any of our students that experience homelessness or if they, if they come into our district af, from like another district and they have been identified as homeless, the McKinney-Vento laws are kind of tricky sometimes of what those students are, have opportunities in the district, so we just help manage, making sure that they're coded the right way in the computer, and we provide them with transportation if they need transportation, or helping connect them to community agencies and our school counselors to get any resources they need.
So, I mean, you can see with, you know, having a very small central office, there's a lot that goes on, and, and I couldn't ask for a better team. I mean, we work very well together, and it's nice that we're able to bounce ideas and things off of each other and help whoever needs help doing whatever, so, so thank you.
And Mary has the best supply of chocolates I've ever seen in her office.
Seems like he really knows where all the-
I'm good. Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, yeah, I got-
Tubs and tubs of milk chocolate.
You're not supposed to say that kind of stuff. I got two.
So, you know, so, you know, so I, I can't, I can't thank them enough of, of everything that they do.
Fairly skinny.
So just a couple of things. First, congratulations to Kevin Hannah. The golf won, beat Field and Norton, so Kevin received his 100 and 110 win. So that is awesome. Our girls are doing phenomenal in golf, as are our boys. So this is, this is exciting, so I'm very proud of Kevin for his, I just got the news just now, so that's, that's good.
Awesome.
Second, one of the things that Dustin said was our calendar. So this is this year's calendar. It came into the, it was included in the Southside Leader on Friday. If you did not get it through the Southside Leader, we do have copies of it in all the buildings, and we did drop them off at some of the local restaurants here in Springfield and Lakemore.
We dropped them off at the library last night.
And we dropped them off at the library last night. If you have a chance, there's a lot of information in here, and, you know, I, everybody did a really nice job. I'm very proud of the work that everybody did into this calendar this year. It's, it's very nice. It's, we added some things, you know, we, last year was our first one, so we learned some things with, with it, and every year we could just get better and better. So if you do need copies, please stop in and grab them. If you have any suggestions or comments about them, you know, we would really like to hear about them. And it's important to know that, coming out of Mary's office, the, some of the calendar was paid through grant funds, so, for community, for community engagement, so very, very proud. I'm not going to tell you who Sparty is on this one, because we have several people who play Sparty.
Look at the shoes.
Yep, that's how you can tell.
Okay, we looked at the shoes. I didn't notice that. So, okay, so it's a-
So I know who that is, huh?
Well, yes, it's, it's not me, okay? So that's all that matters there. I just want to wish everyone a great start of the new year. I'm very excited. Like we all mentioned, we've got a lot of changes that happened this year. We've got new teachers and, and through communication to introduce new teachers and new staff, was, took up quite a bit of time of it, so that was exciting. New programs were, you know, we're gonna, you know, with the new music program at the, at Spring Hill, which is going to allow fifth-grade band at Shrop, which is going to allow a full-time music teacher that's going to be at the high school, so more there. The Jason program with the, for STEM. And we had a professional development this morning, and there was a group of, because anybody can use the Jason project in their classrooms, and we had a group of teachers that sat through it, so hopefully they'll start to use it in, in their classrooms to, to enhance their teaching. And just the new opportunities, you know, the opportunities of the free lunch, the pay-to-play, you know, we're, we're getting there. And, and Miranda, I think you hit it, well, there's, you know, we couldn't hit everything. You know, busing is on our, is, is something that we are working at constantly, and, and, you know, fingers crossed, hopefully eventually we will be able to-
We're heading down that direction.
We're heading that, Dustin shared with me that yesterday, and we're headed down that direction, so we'll have more information for you guys through our Friday board notes to talk about where we're at with that. I do want to remind the, about the new electronic device policy that's going to be starting. A lot of schools, I mean, Dewine, you know, since we didn't have to put this in until 25, 26 school year, but our, our teachers took the initiative, and I'm excited how this is going to work. Remember in the, in the high school, junior high, cell phones, when the first bell rings for class, they are turned off and put in their backpacks. They are allowed to use them during lunch, because we realized that people do, you know, we have kids that have responsibilities and they need to check their emails or whatever, but then as soon as lunch is over, the phones turn off and they go back into their backpacks. And there are going to be, you know, different types of consequences if they don't adhere to that. Shrop, we didn't change anything. The rule has always been that cell phones are turned off and put in their lockers. We just reemphasized that for Shrop. I'm excited. I, I, I think this is going to, you know, one of Dewine's purposes of doing this was to keep kids focused in school, plus to start with the socialization, and, and it's not just cell phones, it's any device- with the socialization. And it's not just cell phones, it's any device that can be web-based. So, I am, I am, I'm excited to see what happens. You know, schools that have done this prior says that change that they see in behaviors and just in the socialization of their kids is tremendous. So, fingers crossed, I think it's going to be good. We do need the help of all the parents and family members out there. Please emphasize to your children, you know, what, what the rules are. And in the calendar, on the first page is the cellphone policy. So, all you have to do is hit the Q R code, and it will give it to you. So, everything is right there on that. Remember tomorrow is the first day for students grades one through six, seventh and ninth, because seventh and ninth have their connections day. That's another thing that we brought back. Last year was the first time. Great program. It gives the seventh graders a chance to really learn the, the, the new building and meet their teachers. And for ninth grade, even though they've been in there for two years, high school is a different game. You know, you've got credits, you've got, you know, different expectations, you've got graduation, that, you know, on your, if you're on the track to graduate. So, we thought, you know, bringing the ninth grade in, having the connections day for their, so they can start feeling that, start understanding about what's happening at P L C C, getting them started. So, that's tomorrow. And then on Thursday, eighth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade will be joining grades one through six, seventh, and ninth. And then kindergarten is going to be the following week after that. And we are going to do that as a staggered start. Last year, we did three staggereds. This year, we're doing two. So, half the kids are going to come in. It helps with the busing for the kids who ride the bus, and it helps the kindergarten teachers, because it is sometimes the first time the kids are learning school. One other thing that Dustin brought in is a new car pickup electronic device. So, this is, every, every person, every student, grades K through six, is going to receive a number. And when they come through the pickup line, we punch a number on, just a web-based, a picture comes up, and we're going to know to make sure it's another safety of which kids get into which cars, and we're going to hope that this speeds up pickup. So, and, and it goes hand-in-hand then too with our new visitor management system. So, we were very lucky with that, and we got a lot of that paid through safety grants. So, we're excited about that. Other than that, I think it's going to be a great year. I'm excited. We're going to make our own joy, and we're going to, it's going to be fun. It's going to be fun. And again, another congratulations to Kevin for your 100th and 101st one win. So, that, and congratulations to the girls for beating both Norton and Field.
Right, yeah. They recovered.
Huh? Yes, they did. And Miranda, like you said, yesterday volleyball beat Manchester, and we haven't beaten Manchester, I guess, in a very, very, very long time, and they won, so.
And my informant said J V did very good today.
Okay, his informant said J V.
Your informant was doing well tonight, too, so you know. If it's the same one.
So, we're excited. And again, if anybody here has any questions, concerns, please call, call me, email me, come in and visit me. My door is always open. I'm done.
And you did.
Wow, freezing.
Wow, it's brutal.
That calendar is.
Great.
Great, yeah. I, I got it, I waited until I got it with the Southside Leader, and I read through it right away, and I called Shelley, because I was so impressed with what a good job it is, and next year, she said it'll probably even be better.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Very proud of it.
Yeah. I, let's see. I'm only going to read part of this list, items worthy of your note, because they have been already announced. But the, there's an open house at Spring Hill.
We did that already.
Tonight, right?
We don't, that was yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. Well, guess who hadn't looked at the calendar? On August 21st, you've already had that announcement about who comes to school. August 22nd, all the buses run and all the students come. On August 26th, preschool open house from 10 to 11. 26th, Spring Hill kindergarten open house at 1:30. August 27th is preschool's first day. And then we have two days of kindergarten coming in, A through L first day, M through Z, the second day, and then on the 29th, everyone shows up together. And on September 2nd, I don't, no one comes to school. It's Labor Day. So, and then September 17th will be your next board, regular Board of Education meeting here at 6:00 P. M. And that, that handles that. So, at this time.
We have a community tailgate party. Our first home game is on Friday, September 6th. The lot will open at 5:00 P. M. We've done this two years ago.
Last year was our first year.
We did, yeah, we did. This will be.
This will be the third year.
It gets bigger every year.
Oh, maybe that's it.
So, come on out, bring your girls, bring, it's a red out, so where you're red.
All right.
Yeah.
And then, and I have one more to add to that. So, that's Friday night, with the football game. And then Saturday is going to be movie night at, in the stadium. We were going to have it that, in August, but that, you know, the weatherman, you know, the only job in the world that you could be wrong on. You know, we thought, we didn't know what the storms were going to be with that. So, the movie's going to be Kung Fu Panda 4, and it's free, and we want to thank Marinatha Church for sponsoring that with us. And, you know, we're hoping to do a lot more of these community night-type activities for, for our families.
Anything else?
No, I think we're done.
Citizens comments. Are there any citizens' comments, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Merkel. I've been here. I only made one meeting last year because of work. I apologize for that. I've got a kid in Spring Hill. He's a third grader this year. It's been a very positive experience so far. Teachers have been, you know, very good, as far as I've come across. I know you guys have a hard job, especially as you get into the older students, I'm sure. Spring Hill, you know, it's mostly little kids, so they're usually a joy to be around. Have volunteered for extracurricular stuff, you know, inflatable days, been part of the P T G. My wife started substituting teaching there last year. And for the most part, every, I can't say a bad thing about any of the teachers. They, you know, they've all been just, it's been a good experience. Even, you know, the kids are a joy, for the most part, you know. I'm sure they all have their days. There's just one thing that I wanted to bring to attention. So, it's brought to my attention that there's a gym teacher over there, I think his name's Mr. Dale Hanley. Usually has kind of a bad disposition. From what I've heard from other little children, nobody likes being in his class. He's always negative, he's always yelling. Kindergarteners, I've heard that they cry before they have to go there sometimes, because he's mean to them, or he's just got a mean disposition. Last year, the, some of the teachers did have kids write letters to him expressing this, and I don't know if that made a difference or not, but I'm hoping it did, moving forward. Like I said, I've been involved in extracurricular activities. I've talked to other parents, and even the kids on a bad day, they're still, it's just, they're pleasant to be around at that age, you know, they're not teenagers yet, so, you know, you might have to raise your voice. I understand that, is, you know, I have a nine-year-old, sometimes they just don't listen. But other than that, I've had, haven't had to do anything other than raise my voice maybe just a, you know, one notch at any of the events, and, you know, they, the kids pay attention then. So, you know, I didn't know what the proper procedure is for this, you know. I just figured I'd bring it up to this, to you guys' attention, see how you got, you know, let you guys do whatever you do to take care of that and to look into it. That's about all I have. Yeah, that's it.
All right. And Mr. Merkel, ever, you ever need anything, you call me.
All right.
Come on, just stop on by. We'll talk. Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely. And you have any other concerns or anything, just come see me at any time.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Heather Anderson. I am the founder and president of Spartan Snack Pack. We have been in the school system since 2018. We did have a couple of years that we had to stop doing the program because of COVID and funding and things like that. So, we were able to have a couple of food drives and that, that kind of got us kick-started into being able to bring the program back. And I want to thank Shelley and Dustin for being a huge part in working with the school board and that, in order to, to do that and be able to accommodate us here at the Boyer School. It is a huge, huge help to us to be able to, to work out of this, out of this school. We have a lot of support from our, not only the school board members, but a lot of support in the community, as well as additional school workers. We have from the maintenance guys that pick up the, the bags on Fridays to deliver those to the schools, the office workers that get those to the kids that are signed up for the program, and bus drivers that kind of help get the meals to the kids as well. And so, it's, it's kind of a, kind of a, a school-wide thing, and a, and a school-wide cooperation that allows this program to be able to continue. And so, we are very grateful for the support that you guys have given us. And so, we could not do this without you guys and the community and the, the employees of Springfield Schools. We even have, one of the nice things is, we do have some of the workers that have reached out to us and said, hey, we know this family, what can you do to help them? And we're able to just call Dustin or text Dustin and say, hey, can you add this family? And by that Friday, we're getting meals out to them. So, as of last year, and we are hoping that we can be able to get more bags to kids, but as of last year, we were sending home 144 kids' bags for the weekends. And we are looking at doing at least that this year, and like I said, hopefully adding more on to, to that. We, I went back through, and since we have been able to work with the Akron Canton Food Bank, we have, from, that was the end of September of 2023, so that kind of took us through the 23, 24 school year. And for that, until just what we picked up this morning, we have done 25,049 pounds of food. That is just for the snack packs. When you deal with the Akron Canton Food Bank, they require a minimum of six items, two breakfast, two lunch, and a couple of snacks. Last year, we were sending home 12 items for our kids. We send home, you know, fruit cups and things, additional things like that to kind of supplement. So, it's not just, the way I look at it is not just breakfast, lunch, but also dinner as well. You have families that work, you know, crazy schedules, and kids don't always make things for themselves. So, this allows, you know, them to be able to get a, a big amount of, of items. We also have been able to, after the Christmas and Thanksgiving and Christmas break, my thought process was hunger doesn't stop in January. So, we were able to continue to, in, in November, December, we got the families that received the snack pack, we were able to do a pantry for them. And so, we have been able to continue that. And on average, we do about 30 families of the 54 to 57, I think it's 54, 57 families, that utilize the snack pack program. On, on average, we're able to get food to 30 of those families. So, I haven't sat down and figured out the amount of items that we get to them, but the, the pantry is, to me, just as important, because we're able to get those families things that they either might not buy, or it can, they, they're not able to, to, or they don't have to use their food card as much. So, that kind of frees them up to be able to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables, or meat items, or things like that. So, so that is, is very important. And we also, with those families, we also try to give them, we give them things like toilet paper, paper towel, toothpaste, laundry detergent, because my thought process in that is if we can help, help get those items to the family, that kind of helps in their budget and being able to fill in that gap, to where maybe that kind of frees up some, some money for them to be able to take their kids to, you know, something or whatever, to be able to spend time with their kids. And to me, that's just as important, to be able to spend time. We also give baking things to the families to where, you know, the parents would have time to bake with those kids. So, but anyway, so I just kind of want to give a shout-out to you guys, because I could not do that without any of you guys. I also want to thank, because this is a community-wide thing as well, we have Marinatha, who has done superb with food drives for us, Springfield Women's Club, well, Marinatha too, but them, and the Springfield Women's Club, the Assembly of God. They all have their members come and volunteer to pack the bags for us. We also have Lakemore Lighthouse, which has helped bring in things. We also had Donnie and Parker, who were able to bring stuff to the Stuff the Bus. We had drivers that were able to drive the bus for us. We have had different, different community things, like Uncle Tito's, we got a grant, did a fundraiser for us. We got a grant from J Rail Charities. So, we're kind of, you know, working on getting fundraising for this next school year coming up. And I want to give a shout-out to Melinda and Mr. Hofer's wife, because they were the ones that brought the bus to the Stuff the Bus for us. Well, his wife picked up, Melinda was dropping it off and stuff. And then I want to give a shout-out to Walmart, that it was able to give us the day to be able to do the Stuff the Bus. Coach Kelly and the general manager over there were wonderful to work with. And of course, I couldn't do any of this without my vice president and my two pantry managers. A pantry manager for the, the snack pack side, and a pantry manager for the pantry side, and those are Kim Wright and Michelle Stevenor. And our vice president does a lot of work as well. So, it just goes to show the positive things that's happening in our community, how the community is stepping up to make this about our kids and all the people that were, when I was doing the Stuff the Bus, and I'm like, hey, this is what they were do, you know, what we do and stuff. And they went in and they would bring stuff out to us, and, and they were happy to do it. So, I mean, when they say it takes a village, it really does. You know, we, we, you got to watch out for the kids. A starving, you know, a starving or hungry child cannot learn. And even, you know, even that has its limits with, you know, because I know my kids would eat me out of house and home, especially in the summertime. So, that's why, even in the summertime, that pantry was so important. So. So, um, you know, so I just want to thank each and every one of you because you all have played a part in helping get this program, you know, to its two and a half years of, of being back since COVID. So I really appreciate all of you. So trying to stay on a positive note, this is wonderful for our community and, um, you guys are awesome. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. It is, it is quite amazing on pantry food day, pick up the, what, what's in those boxes and, and the fresh fruit that you eat, that jury will even get them in and, and even some pet supplies for...
Yes.
Yes, there were some, uh, that's, that's...
Also, we have to...
Yeah, so, and thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and thank you for pushing it to bring it back and, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
We made our own joy.
We made our own...
Yeah.
Yes, we did. We made our own joy today.
Anything else before we, um, so, um, recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes. And thank you to everyone who was here and participated.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
I have one more.
One more?
Well, you and Shelley, I'm just saying. Get that transcript.